Just talked to him personally.
I don't know that we can, we actually organize for that.
Not, not, we can't be political organization, but I think what's being suggested may be a meeting to lay out to the employees. Here are the, here are the various options that are fa- the county's facing.
They let it, yeah.
Basically, more of an expanded version of the letter that was presented to the county board and, or passed by the county board and presented to the judge. Cause I mean, that was a one-page letter, we could explain more fully what that means.
You also like your employees are uninformed of what's going on?
I figure every employee is probably pretty, uh, aware of what's happening.
They need to be aware of it.
Unless they got their head in the sand.
Yeah. Have your little pet dog would hurt things.
Right, I mean, right now, whether it passes or does, say if it doesn't pass, what are you planning to fix with the money that you're trying to get?
From budgets?
Just what, what's your plan to fix the courthouse right now?
Tuck point and we're in that work as fast as possible.
Any idea what that's gonna cost?
Uh, we're getting bids from.
Yeah, our, our Q A W has been talking to Patrick for the last few weeks and we have a, a bid thing to put in the paper.
Tuesday I'll be coming before the board, at that point want to prove it or at least look at it to put in the paper to receive bids for. So we, we know what the cost could potentially be. And I think the roof, we can honestly fairly say it'll be one twenty to one fifty.
I, I don't understand that. We just paid a hundred for a roof, we're gonna pay a hundred and twenty four for a roof.
Well, now we got, well, what was the next highest bid? Or the next, well, there was two bids.
Whatever, we're paying anything more for another roof than we just paid a guy to fix.
Correct.
We have to do it again?
Because we, yes. At least for the time being. Cause it had, cause the longer it waits, the higher the price.
I understand the process that you indicated it could take years.
Yep.
To send anything prime though.
The only people working at courts, they work slow.
Wheels of justice turn slowly sometimes.
But I don't know if that answers your question, I mean.
So the roof's one twenty to one fifty, what's the tuck point? I mean, we, are we looking at a figure?
We had one gentleman look from the street one time, what was his number that he said?
One fifty.
Yeah. But I'm just saying that's what a guy said, I'm not saying that's.
That wasn't a bid on paper.
Yeah.
It was a ballpark.
Yeah.
And it's basically from the s- top of the second floor window up?
Is that what we looked at on it?
It was, uh, about that, yeah. And then there's also the asbestos emolder. A removal that we have to.
We have to get done before the court system would move back, which would be, you know, a large courtroom. And then probation and state attorney's office, we have to, you know, fix their ceilings where they've been damaged. And then the court system, I, and I don't know about the electrical now with that issue, what wouldn't have to be done? You know, that Mr. Ream locked out, you think if, uh, if it gets dry that it's gonna be okay, or do you think it?
Well, I mean, that was the problem.
Yeah.
Cause the water was coming in on, on the electrical. I mean, I'm sure there's gonna have to be some work done to it.
So, you know, hopefully with three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars I can recover all that. Not sure if it will, but, uh, unfortunately, we just have to show a plan, you know, to show Judge Williamson that we are having alternative plan if the sales tax don't pass.
I would say for the last four, five, six months, you're making payroll, you're paying bills, where's that money coming from? Is that sales tax revenue mainly?
Sales tax fees and fines, different offices, the fees that you all put in, yes.
So the property tax money that we got at the beginning of last year, that's spent at the beginning of the year, you're not using it right now to make payroll or pay bills?
The property tax.
They've already made this first mention, we're already blown through it.
Already?
There's not that much of it.
It's only four hundred thousand dollars, so that's, you know, four payrolls and it's gone.
I mean, the second installment hasn't been put in either, has it?
No, not yet.
Okay, so I mean, there is still an influx of money, uh, that.
But the second installment won't be as big as the first because a lot of people come in and pay the whole bill.
Yeah, places paid the whole thing.
What do you think the second installment might be?
I mean, I can just choose.
Let's say if it's a hundred, it could possibly be about a hundred thousand, hundred fifty.
Just take a payroll overhead going to.
But I mean, I understand with the union contracts, the way they work is before really necessarily you can have layoffs, you have to show a cause that you can't pay your bills.
Well, I mean, that's the, that's the area they're gonna look at, you know, where could you get money at before the last case scenario with many people off?
Right.
Can you borrow or can you have money more coming in or?
Sure we can borrow, I mean, we haven't borrowed, we, we don't owe nobody to anybody, as in a bank, so. If we had to. But you gotta show a source that you can pay it back.
Right, hard to get a loan when you can't pay it back.
Call, see the bills in there. Hey, this is Jason Farmer, is Bill in today? Yeah, if you don't mind us having given you a call, I'll give you my number. Two seven zero eight five three four five two zero. Thank you. We'll be in shortly. Uh, do you want us just to continue to process through these budgets? Or do you think, Patrick, there's some other hypothetical option to, to do something?
Well, my belief is you need to explore every option. But if one of the options that we're looking at is cuts to the budget, I think we need to not just throw it as a possibility, but really look at it closely because we don't wanna be sitting here at the end of December trying to scramble with the, with the budget.
But the tort funding, if Phil's a pre-confident expert, it's, it's not a lot of options.
I, I do not believe that will be illegal use.
How much is in that budget?
It's how I had to take it, did you give me the total?
Do we borrow from the tort?
Yes, but we have to pay it back within a year. We can borrow from any county fund, uh, that may have money, but we have to pay it back within the year.
The same fiscal year.
Correct.
Cause I mean, you can borrow from one fund to pay off another fund if you want.
It's all robbing, you didn't pay it back.
He's doing a self game.
Kicking the can down.
Yeah, kicking the can.
That'll get rid of that.
I have another, a question. If you cut it twelve percent, and say here in the courthouse we were to have to lay off somebody, in order to keep that person, could we go, could the courthouse just be open four days a week?
The, uh, the law requires us to be open, uh, five days and we do allow for the one hour at, uh, noon. However, and there have been times in the past where, uh, I don't know how many years ago it was, within the last ten years, we had an issue with, uh, revenue and I think it was the state not paying, or there was issues with the delay in state payment. And there were cuts to the budgets, uh, of county offices and some county offices went to four days a week with their employees. Now, the office was still open five days a week, but.
The office holder was there five days a week or somebody's.
Well, what we did, what we did was we rotated.
Right.
We all worked our hours, but we, we had four days a week, but we rotated on.
Went down to thirty-two hours and, and received pay at thirty-two hours rather than forty. Now, that's easier for non-union offices to do, a union office would have to take the consent of the union to enter.
What y'all wanna do? Y'all wanna work on her budget or?
I mean, the, the plan is the, we already sent the chief judge that the plan was to reduce budgets, that the worst-case scenario plan, I guess you'd say. Ted brought up that he wanted that everybody needed to be informed, I mean. In order to come up with the three hundred and forty thousand, isn't that what you come up with after I come up with the final one I got on my math?
Is that right?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What about stuff that isn't in the budget? Things like insurance, things like, uh, like the cost of our tax program or different things like that, what about looking at those things?
Well, those things, you know, that we've seen in the budget, we've just kinda skipped over cause we kinda thought them was almost as big as cause.
But if you can save, if you can save money with insurance, why wouldn't?
Yeah.
Why do we always have to look at the offices? I mean, only, you know, I don't wanna speak on my behalf, but I'm, I'm saying, I'm sorry, guys, I've already cut my budget everywhere possible. And, and I'm running it pretty efficiently, so to say to cut me, and especially since half my salary is paid by the state, ninety percent of this man's salary, I think, is paid by the state, kinda hard to cut out, out of these offices that you're being reimbursed on. Just a comment. I'm just, I'm just thinking, is there, is there any other areas that we can look to save on? That is outside the budget?
Well, there were some things that I missed, we felt like, I don't know if you can tell Gary, but there were certain things that we felt like we could reduce, I mean, like we didn't have an option there.
I understand there's some things you can, and I understand there's some things you can't, you levy into, you can't.
Five hundred and seventy-four thou- am I reading that right? Seventy, there's five hundred and seventy-four thousand in your liability account, what's the?
Real estate.
Oh, real estate, that's roughly what's left to come in. That makes sense.
Very accurate.
Well, there's half a million in the tort liability.
Yeah, but that's also where your health insurance is getting paid out of too. So. Something to be known.
But you levy money into that account every year, correct?
Correct.
Okay, is that, does it cover the cost of all that, what we're levying?
Yeah, actually, is that the one of the ones that was building up just a little?
It seemed like it was, I, I don't have the audit front of it.
I don't either.
I guess another point I probably said before I came in, but it's also just not a, a situation where we bite the bullet for one year and get through this.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is long term.
This is phase one of a project that will be.
For the last year.
Two thousand and eighteen, there will be another portion of the projects, my understanding, that will involve some other aspect of the courthouse, year three, until, we get the courthouse renovated. Cause my, the first year without getting it, without the leaks and getting the asbestos emolder was enough for the court system to agree to move back. That's not gonna be satisfactory to have the courthouse renovated, from what I've heard, from, from the judges. They feel like there's other issues that we've all seen and that are part of the plan that need to be addressed. So I didn't want, you know, was, was talking, throwing out numbers for people who are outside of this room to think, well, I mean, they're just talking about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and why do we need a one percent sales tax? Everybody tighten up one year and that'll solve it. Wanted that to be clear, that's not gonna solve the issue.
I could proceed at least four years.
I do, you have to plan the project and how you win each year and how much it was gonna cost each year, but it's not, it's not a one-year solution.
So there's no, no.
Unfortunately, I mean, you start to do this stuff, you just never know what issues and problems you come in and you might need more money. You know, it's just, we're just asking for the bare minimum here to try to get started.
I don't know, I mean. Is there anybody here that's not, or is there anybody on the list that's not represented in this room? I don't think so, County Clerk, Crater, Larry, Ted, no, that, Gary and Patrick, and that's it. That comes up with the three hundred and forty thousand now, so.
The highway department.
How can we cut the highway department with some of the, or the, the way they get their revenue?
Well, Dana can, or, or Juanita can fill in anything I miss or correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is basically the highway department operates out its own revenue.
Yeah.
So if we cut their expenses, we can't use their revenue from the courthouse.
That makes sense, yeah. We, we'd stop them from spending their money.
The county doesn't, imagine, is the only county that, I don't know. If we touched, faced on that like ten years ago, you know, well, all the social security and all that, so.
Cause that doesn't come out of the general fund, does it?
No, so.
So the percentage figure that you're using, is that gonna be on the sixteen budget or the seventeen budget that we've submitted?
We, we use the sixteen numbers, so it's, I mean, it's certainly even worse, cause I guarantee, I didn't, I haven't even looked at your.
You know, I mean, I've got union contracts with wages already locked into increase for the next three years.
So you, you're telling us basically the worst-case scenario is to be prepared to cut our budgets twelve percent, is that what we're talking about?
Off of sixteen.
That's our worst-case scenario.
I believe so, well.
It's not, it's the one we would, in this room, least like to see.
Correct.
But it's something we've got a plan on, cause it could become.
Reality.
Reality. I understand that. I hope you all understand, like Dana said, oh, there's very few dollars are being wasted in any, we're all in the same fight here. Just how best to address this, and I think probably when this is over, out in the hallway, we need to get together, maybe plan it. I don't know, have a battle plan for, you know.
Your gr- your, uh, your ground plan?
My ground plan for promoting, promoting the waters.
We're gonna hardies, we're gonna hardies.
Lot of world's problems are solved.
Yeah, that's exactly.
Where's that kinda, what's that home restaurant? Rips, rips. Rips, rips, all the answers are there.
You know, with that being said, what other options do you want the commissioners follow up? We talked to Mr. Guy, or see options on the insurance, right? Patrick, a little, little bit into.
We have, we have to speak with both the insurance agent and.
Again, wouldn't that just be for this year, that would just be for the rest, there's gonna be more, like you said, this is not a one-year, everybody.
We've got plumbing, electrical, whittles.
That does, right, so we need more of a long-term remedy, yeah.
Plan. Yes.
Anybody else have comments or suggestions? Gary had asked, would, what, what, repeat your question, what, what else can be looked at other than?
Than our budgets, cause I mean, is there other expenses in or out there? Like I said, the example, we'll see insurance, you know, is there any other areas that we can look to cut that would help?
Well, I'm just going down through the list of the different things on the budget, workers comp, I guess we can get the state to lower the workers, you know?
No, that's not gonna happen.
You know?
Well, you started talking for the state, that ain't gonna happen.
Some of those that aren't in the office holders' budget or funded by separate levies that if you cut them, it's, you can't use the money for the general fund anyway. So that's, that's another issue.
Again, I'm just trying to put stuff out there that people are gonna ask.
Right.
Because they, you know, this, this whole thing is very complex to, and the common person does not understand how property tax, how any of these taxes and how any of the levies work. Because again, I always preach out there, look at your tax bill, if you're mad about your tax bill, look at. Let's see, one of your biggest challenges has always been you guys have been P-Tel, so you guys have been restricted in the past of what you could levy. And that's been part of the problem, so when people tell me, what I say to people out there about this one percent sales tax is listen, you strangled everybody with your P-Tel, which as a taxpayer, I'm gonna say was a good thing, but from your standpoint, as a taxing body, it's not. Because then it restricts you from being able to levy to fix things like this. Or to have been able to maintain it in the past.
Guess it just depends whether you're gonna pay it in or receive it in.
Totally agree. I just don't wanna see this go to the property taxpayer.
No, this is a good way to avoid it, and we need to make the public, our citizens understand.
That's where it's gonna go, folks.
The much better option is this one percent sales tax.
It is definitely the lesser of two evils.
So.
And you have, you have outside people helping funding it when you have a, a sales tax, there's a lot of municipalities that are utilizing sales tax. I mean, hell, I was somewhere, I paid fourteen percent sales tax, but when, whoa, but it, you know, it was, it wasn't the amount that scared me, it was just they seen that fourteen percent. You know, because the amount really wasn't that much, like six dollars or whatever.
It's about five percent, it's a one percent.
Yeah, so, again, it's, you know, people look at that percentage and just wanna freak out, but really it's minute.
So we need to look at.
But collectively, it's a good thing.
Do I, sir? We need to look at, we need to review our budget request and, and see if we gotta get to twelve percent is the worst scenario.
That's correct.
Okay.
If y'all can do that.
And then we need to organize, see about the other way.
Yeah.
Is that about it?
That's it, Mr. Grace.
All right.
You did, great job summoning it up.
You guys wanna look at the request or?
Yeah, I mean, we still should just.
Yeah, I mean, we, we haven't looked at the better-case scenario yet. Stay or go or whatever you wanna do.
Well, you know, maybe somebody shouldn't have gotten a raise this year. Gary, what kind of percentage was that, like twenty?
Pretty good percent, we also, we also cut it off his budget though.
But still, it's, looks bad.
To lower his budget?
No, to, to give him a raise.
I'll be with him.
When the rest of us are getting cut. Right, when the rest of us are getting cut, we didn't get a raise. Because somebody tabled and tabled and tabled until it was too late.
Well, maybe if you're that upset, you may wanna go out there and discuss it with some of these people at, uh, at, uh, where the cement plant and like.
Oh, I understand, I'm just saying though, that is, that wasn't quite.
I mean, we've got bigger things even too than this, I mean.
We got seventeen people out there fixing to be out of a job and you're, and you're upset because you didn't get a raise.
No, I'm not upset because I didn't get a raise, I'm, I'm upset that it's came to this point and with everything you've done prior to this.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't care that I didn't get a raise.
No, it, that's, that's not the point I'm trying to make.
Nobody gets a raise, you know, that's different, but anyway, that's.
Under request, Juanita?
Okay.
Sixteen, it says forty-one, six thirty, but this one says forty-one, six twenty-six, is that accurate? I guess, I was just thinking.
Should be higher, it should be higher than last year, but I got. Oh, no, mine is the same.
Okay, well, it's actually, it shows four.
Yeah, she don't get a raise.
I just didn't know.
She just went over this.
But, uh.
I don't think she's upset about not getting a raise.
No, I'm not upset about getting a raise.
It's, if, if nobody gets a raise, it's different than when some people get some and some people don't, that's. If we're in that better shape, nobody should get one.
It's like she said earlier about cutting the twelve percent across the board.
Hey, I'm there, let's go.
That's what I'm saying though, that's, that's the point I'm trying to make, we haven't all been treated equally.
I think I asked Dana, I might not ask you, I mean, of course, it's too late in the ballgame right now to give you a raise, but, uh, I mean, if you, you're willing to lower your budget, I'll fight for your raise.
I'm, I'm not worried about a raise. Like I said, it's not the point I'm trying to make.
That's what you keep hammering on.
This, uh, sixteen budget.
Yeah.
Right there, you have that, and then right here, there's seventeen. It's the same thing, so I just wanna get a look at that, make sure that's right.
Oh, they may not be.
I don't know if you wanna look at it, bring it back to.
So you want us to cut twelve percent and then show you how we're gonna cut, or you're just gonna tell us twelve and then let us do it?
If you wanna do it, that seems better. Yeah, if you wanna.
I mean, ultimately, you're running your office.
That's what I mean.
Yeah. Basically, we, we'll just be able to give you a number and say, this is what you'd like, like to have. Okay.
I think Brent Williams said out in Montana, they had a private citizen that spent, I don't know how much money to promote, cause the first time their sales tax also failed, and they actually had a private citizen to pay money to, uh, promote it. And so, I don't know about that anymore, but it passed the second time, so.
Have we received any money in that?
About a hundred bucks in there.
No.
I don't know. You talking about that, the renovation fund?
I believe they, they put something, uh, they were taking donations, that's what I was asking.
Oh.
We did get a donation that one time.
Gary will fill that off.
But really, Jason, on mine, I cut it to the bare minimum, one of them that I did. The only place I can cut his salary.
So what y'all wanna do, work on what budget, Gary?
Did she just redo hers or what?
She, she.
You know, I made a copy, please.
She's gotta change something on hers, it looks like, so we can skip past her, we have, you have one. Or which one you want to cut? Treasure looks like it's next.
Patrick, what's the, I remember back, I think, what's the line up there, like the official salaries?
Cannot be a diminutive increase while they're in office.
What happens if it, it were? Can you?
Not legally, cannot, now.
I just wanna make sure when people ask, why didn't you cut yours or?
That's correct, the office holder's salary has to be established six months prior to them taking office and then it cannot be changed during their term of office.
That's what I thought, but.
You know, I, on both of theirs, that's what I asked, Juanita, on these, uh, salaries, it's still the same as last year. Should they, should you put what you project the salaries will be for next year on your budget?
No, Dana's. Talking about deputy salaries?
I'm looking at sixteen budget, it says forty-one, six thirty, and I know what she's requesting.
That's her official.
Yeah, that's the official, that's the same.
Okay, but I'm talking about. Okay, but I'm talking about, okay, oh, I see where it's ninety, I was looking at it.
Yeah.
Ninety-seven, five ten.
It does look the same when you first look at it.
Okay, I see.
Yeah, it is up. And there's laws prohibiting the courthouse to not be open anything but five days a week.
Uh, I believe that, I need to look at the statute to be clear, I think the, the uh county board could require the courthouse to be open on Saturday. Could expand it, but I don't believe that there could be.
I've had requests of that.
But I don't think there's anything to be done to reduce.
Well, it's around a four day.
Right, yes, five days is the.
Does it save on utilities, saves on?
Right.
Just check.
Oh, yeah, right. I think hers looks pretty good, did you look at hers? I mean, basically, the only thing that's increased is just her deputy salaries, which are contractual.
I'm good with it, look at you.
So twelve percent off of that figure?
Yeah.
Off of sixteen.
Sixteen, two thousand six.
Okay, so that's gonna be.
Yes, all you have to do is just, you know, go back to what sixteen. It looks like the circuit clerk's the next one I had, so chill.
Well, probably just place my circuit clerk.
I just wanted to make a copy of that. Jared, Jared, what do you got on?
Sorry.
That's right back.
Can you, can you sit your boot down? Patrick?
Oh, fine, thank you, appreciate it though. You just don't like it up here, do you?
No, I used to. I just don't have, you're done with me and they have more stuff.
The bonds on his seem like it went up a lot, Jill, I would say.
My eye plenty tricked on me.
It's like it's.
It went up from fifty to.
Thirty-six hundred.
Thirty-six hundred?
Yeah. I don't know, what does it cost to bond employees?
A hundred dollars, I mean, I guess it depends on where you go. And then I guess it's who you talk to, because some people say that they're bonded through, I think, you might wanna ask Bill when it comes over. That you're bonded through the liability.
His telephone get loaded a lot, you know, so. From four thousand down to two hundred and fifty. Oh, wow.
What's the deal with the official salaries?
Yeah, well, that's, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I, Dana asked me for a question about official salaries, I do wanna make one point of clarification. This applies to Larry, uh, with the circuit clerk. His salary can be changed anytime because he's considered part of the judicial branch. I know that may not have been your question, but I, if that ever came up, I didn't want it to be confusing.
What's your thoughts up there, Jason and Gerald? You got a sixteen budget?
Uh, yes, I do.
Well, I mean, just by looking at it, uh, equipment maintenance, he went from zero to fifty, bonds fifty to thirty-six hundred.
I'm talking about the very top line, it says official salary on both of them.
Forty-five, zero, 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 five.
Look at sixteen.
Yeah, forty-four, two thirteen.
Got any thoughts on that?
Well, I don't know if that had to do, do with what Patrick said, I don't know if it's, he says he can get a raise each year. He can't, but it's established by the board. Okay. I don't know how he can do that number.
What does it say?
Because when you all approved it, when you all approved it, it's approved at a certain percentage each year for four years.
It's about two percent.
Each year. Okay, so it's in there.
So it is in there.
Yes, it is.
No dog in spite, of course, uh, there's, the last time that was done, I believe, uh, the treasurer, county clerk and circuit clerk were all done at the same time.
Correct.
And it was passed, and there was a layout of the, the four years, what the salary would be for the four years.
But that four-year period is over with, isn't it, aren't we on a new?
No, that was in fourteen.
The sheriff was the same year.
Yeah, it's, see, our three were together. And then Larry's was separate, but it's all done now, a four-year.
Well, it should be, well, either way, it should be on a resolution, the resolution should be something you can see in.
It is, it is.
Does someone be easy to come up with?
Yeah, I'll cut it on there, my own.
Can you get it for us? I don't remember exactly what it was, I'd rather see it in paper, that's just me.
So after Larry's was approved for four years, it can't be changed?
Yes, it's one, it can be changed anytime.
Even though it's been locked in for?
Right, the reason for you, Ted and Juanita, is because yours cannot be. So if you're gonna get incremental raises.
It has to be six months.
Has, the incremental raises be passed six months before you take office or your term.
I was thinking Larry's was locked in.
And the board can take that position, obviously.
Jason, what about the last two?
Office supplies and lease software?
Yeah. Is that alright?
I don't know if those, all three of us just discuss it, see what you guys think.
He bought computers or something.
Yeah, I think, I don't know, I mean, I think he uh instead of purchasing, I think he leases his, his equipment and software. So he gets to stay sneer. I guess bonds, would y'all think that's kinda high?
Yeah, well, the whole thing's over about thirty percent, isn't it? About thirty-one and a half percent. The difference in the forty-five, eight oh five, in his must be because of the one month.
Let's take a fake, don't do something first of every year.
But his budget doesn't take effect until January first, that's why he doesn't have it.
Right.
So it looks like what, and it went up six dollars, eight hundred and sixty dollars in commodities and contractual services, but. Sixty-eight, fifty, is that what you got? Yeah. Or has telephone went down so cheap? It's two hundred and fifty dollars a value he's requesting for a year. Plus four thousand dollars of pre-division.
Grand total typo, that's what's got me screwed up. It's two thirty-three, not two ninety-three. So it was not, it is not at thirty-one percent. Am I, was I reading that wrong? What's it print, say two ninety-three at the very bottom right hand?
Yeah.
It's two thirty-three.
Hello?
Added up to me, I dropped my.
Yeah, that's what I had.
Okay. I'm not nearly as wigged out as I was. Just saying, Alan, that worked.
Cause last year it was two twenty-three.
That's what I'm trying to, I don't, I just wanna understand.
I bet he's in court.
Yeah, we have court in nine thirty, somebody. What, do you have a question about the bond?
That and the telephone. Gerald, you got any questions?
Well, see, the one that's not even on the fifteen. So I guess he's leasing everything now.
Do you think, like Juanita said, maybe he reversed those numbers? He meant to put a, a.
Telephone at thirty-six hundred.
Yeah, and put bonds at two hundred and fifty. So everything else is pretty much in line. You know? I guess we can ask him about it.
Yeah.
But yeah, I think, like Juanita said, maybe he just reversed all the numbers.
See the tail of our coming in?
I don't know.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Wait till we catch up with him and ask him.
Yeah.
I'd rather have some clarity.
You wanna go over to Patrick real quick since he's got a lead here this morning?
I can find it, we're.
I think I got some copies over here if you don't need one.
You got one, Gerald?
Yeah.
Patrick, is your part-time salary, is that your drug enforcement officer?
No, I, I include that just in case, uh, something occurs during the year where I need a person to come in and.
Cover.
Cover illness or some other issue in the office. And as you can see, we've not spent any, we've not spent that lot out this year. Yeah, printing and publishing? Yes. Look back at it. What's sixteen you requested, seven fifty, what, fifteen hundred, is that just? More. That is, uh, that line I'm gonna spend when there is a, uh, need for us to print a notice in the newspaper for a case, which occurs mainly in juvenile cases. There's an abuse and neglect case, we often have to publish against, uh, parents who don't appear in court to get jurisdiction.
Alright, question. Looks alright to me. Is your, is the second page, is that back here in the fine print? Follow me, Patrick.
During the age of question, I'm sorry.
This, your drug assets forfeiture fund?
Yes, it's, it should be also included there.
Not on the same page though.
My telephone mine, let's give you a head in here off of.
Two in the facts.
Two in the fact.
Yeah.
Maybe you have two in the fact. I was thinking somebody had cut down to one. I think you will have to have two in conjunction. Because if somebody has a problem, then somebody else has a problem. And it's just weird. If you're right down to one, that'd be, take care of the telephone. No, I've got three lines in the facts because I also have one.
No, we'll be back in.
Yeah, it should be near the top. They would have been passed, uh...
A drug force.
Yeah.
Page forty-three. Same, same, same.
It should be.
I'm good with it. You are happy, I'm happy.
Yeah.
You gonna put somebody in the middle there?
Maybe he's already there, so hopefully the status quo remains. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Have you there?
You too.
Got one with the sheriff's office. Thanks.
So this twelve percent though, you said it'd start this year. Will it be after the election? Will we find out?
It'll start January one, yeah.
January, yeah. Well, that would be only twenty seventeen though.
Correct.
That you'd said that through sixteen.
We're working off, well, the twelve percent, we took the sixteen number times eighty-eight percent. Does that make sense?
So it's really going to be more than twelve percent of your seventeen.
Correct.
You have to go off of your figures, you're sixteen and... Yeah, well, basically my figures were the same as sixteen.
Yeah, very, very.
With the exception of the salary. Yeah, that's...
It'd be worse, but just barely worse.
All right, uh, sheriff's, is it the one you're looking at?
I'm looking.
Yeah.
Come in.
Had a ten fifty-five ninety-seven equipment for body cameras. Uh, I'm just reading here, it says the four thousand that was added to last year's budget for body cameras did not have to be used in sixteen. We're expected to be forcing to buy this year, so four thousand be carried over. So is that four thousand cover all the cameras or are you buying three of them because the budget's twelve thousand?
Based on the prices right now, if I had to outfit everybody with a body camera, that four thousand should cover.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm waiting for a federal mandate to make us do it.
So you think that's fixing to come for what you're getting now?
If they do the mandate, then there should be some grants that come along with it.
Oh, I got you. That's why you're not spending the money.
That stuff, I mean, the technology changes every year, so if we've spent four thousand dollars for them this year, two years now, they're going to be outdated. We'd better worry in the cars.
So... You think... Yeah, speculation. I was gonna say, if you're going to get a grant, if they do a mandate, they're going to be rolling in cameras too. I bet the prices are up.
No, it's like on state beds, there'll, there'll be a cap on what they'll pay for. They'll admit it eventually.
How does, how do they work? Are they, just, do they activate when they're on or...?
Probably what it's going to come down to is when the officer goes on duty, when he walks out that front door, that camera's going to roll and it's not going to shut off till he comes back.
Really?
It's, because if you shut it off or anything, if something happens, they're going to say, what, you shut that camera off?
Yeah.
So everything he does or she does for eight hours is going to be recorded.
Be a lot different? But you have authority to, I mean, they have the option to turn it off and, and be to have a private conversation or do something.
I'm not sure what's going to, you know, there'll be, there'll be some federal guidelines you've got to go by.
Yeah.
Waiting on your private conversation after shift, I guess.
I guess that's right. I didn't know that that would work. So if I read this, Greg, it says total increase in budget to twenty-six thousand, seven oh two. Twenty-five thousand, seven oh two was salary increases due to contract. Twenty thousand was added to this year's budget for operations. And this was due to mandatory state law for training.
Yes. We've got something called Maricand Training, it's, uh, and Hope Yet Overdose Kit, that all the officers have to train on how to use. We've got to buy, so they're trained in that yet. And there's going to be some cultural diversity training that's going to be mandated by the state, we've got to open.
You're going to jump there, everybody suits, don't you?
Some of safe people that chose to stick a needle in their arm.
Dietary prisoners, that's just, the way around that is...
Yeah.
Due to our high population count.
I can, I can cut twenty-five thousand dollars of that real quick, but that's stop housing out of county prisons. That's a hundred thousand dollars a year.
So to save twenty-five or lose a hundred, or lose seventy-five thousand?
I mean, believe me, he's getting, the dietary requirements are there, the calories you're supposed to have, and he's buying the cheapest he can buy. We're just, you know, we have to house those prisoners, the state law says we have to. It's cheaper than anywhere else.
Do you foresee us being able to raise that fee up anytime?
If we raise it up, they're going to go to Selene County.
I mean, you never see Selene ever raising theirs up.
They, they offset theirs by housing federal prisoners.
Because their jails have better standards, correct?
It's big, it's big. Ours, ours is it, you know, if they would have built our jail twice the size, we could hold more inmates. But we can't, we're, we're locked in just about where, you know, we house thirty of our own and ten of somebody else's.
So federal guidelines are this, your jail does not house enough people to mess with, or...?
With the federal guidelines, you'd have to have more people on staff, you'd have to have better food, you'd have to have more medical care for them. It costs more money, you're going to get more, but it's going to cost you more money out of it. They have to have separate cells, so you'd have to isolate a cell block for federal prisoners. You might have fifteen one day and two the next. We just, we can't do that. We've got, we've got so many of our own between the people we arrest, Metropolis State Police. We average probably twenty-five to thirty, that's how many prisoners we have. So that's why when I come in here every Tuesday, I say we're maxed out, we got right around forty, and ten of them's usually out of town.
The deferred comp plan, you'd probably spend less money than that in seventeen than you did in sixteen, wouldn't you? Isn't that what we come up with, where they were taking some... That wasn't part of the retirement deal, was it?
They take their sick days.
They could take their deferred comp and invest it.
Okay, yeah. But I was thinking that initial year would be more expensive, am I thinking wrong? Or do you think it'd be...
No, they had, they had to have at least a hundred hours and then hang with that till they could break it down into thirds.
Oh, I guess that's right, because...
You have, probably after the third year, you'll go back.
Some of them was not to, hadn't built it up enough to take advantage of, okay.
The ones that have been there like close to twenty years are not going to do that for that to lose their sick.
So this courthouse annex, I'm doing that, I feel pretty confident on those numbers, or...?
No. And that is, yes.
It's kind of a shot in the dark.
Yeah, I mean, trying to go what she spends here.
Yeah.
So you're going to do another building, so try to do the same way. There's more in it because you've got more air conditioning repair, the snow removal, I'm trying to guess what that's going to be.
When's the deadline to turn that in, or is it already past?
Uh, I think there's another week or two.
Awesome.
I'm writing for three weeks.
Is it coming to your office, or is it coming here?
I mean, it's in your office.
Yeah, I have it back there.
I seem to add a paper, that is.
Yeah, I mean, that's just, that's just a guess of what was going on.
So you roughly said fifteen thousand dollars, still? You may be about with half that.
Called him, he came and shoveled out here for free last year.
What'd that tell you? Let's turn a bid in for him, just say free next to it.
Yeah, free, that man did it.
That's going to be my biggest...
He figured it'd cost him more if I slipped and bust in my bed, I guess.
Because people are going to be wanting to come to work here, people want to come to work up there in Marsha, and maybe one trustee. It's going to be hard to get this building built.
I don't guess it's rained since Mr. Burnhill's fixed that leak asset, see if it's worked.
What did they find?
Uh, we talked over the phone, uh, I don't know, he tried to explain it, but it was around those, uh, I don't know if people call it dormer windows, or whatever those windows up with the roof are, and he said it was just needed to be re, uh, some concrete, putting in those. And it was another issue, but he thought for two or three hundred dollars, he could fix it. So, you could see the water coming in there. About on the auto expense, I know you're at ninety-five still, do you see that coming down any with better gas mileage in their cars?
I, it's, it's going to, cars are getting better gas mileage, I just, I don't know, because this is going to be our first year with old Dodges, to see what they do. But I know they're getting better gas mileage, I just don't know what the gas price is going to be.
Yeah, it may go up.
Yeah. Maybe after the election, you never know.
I think Dodgers run off of their gas mileage.
These, these are really good.
I know the truck I had went down west and down north, but I guess it got better.
Got any thoughts, Gerald?
I'm good. Shut on right into silence.
Right?
It was.
Really, all the sheriffs just, they went up a thousand dollars in salaries. About the county jail?
Basically about same.
Yeah, just... Equipment though, you got down with it, didn't you?
That was the ten thousand we'd set aside for cameras that we're buying this year, we're not going to need next year, so it's not a big cutback.
And you're just basically on hold on that, you just don't know when that's going to happen?
Well, we've got the stiff orders.
Okay.
And we've already got one of the insurance checks, so it should be installed within the next month.
Okay.
Like, probably just paid that fellow one and third of it, didn't you?
Yeah.
I'm just prepared to give another insurance check, so another two thousand dollars there.
So we all get on the jail?
Yeah.
Then I guess the last one is courthouse maintenance.
Picture of him in the front.
Is it?
Yeah.
I guess I'll start it from the front, front and up. Yeah, I have a bad look at that.
Ten forty-two.
Eight-six. Ten forty-two, that's it.
Got your ride coming for lunch?
No, he's going to get wet, whoever he is.
That waiter sounds...
Sounds good.
Is your elevator maintenance going to be hanging up, Ted?
Right now, it looks like it is. The one we've got here in this building is not in great shape.
What's wrong with it?
A lot of times it sticks, it's, it's old. It's probably, you know, when you talk about renovating this building.
Yeah.
If that sales sacrifice, that's probably what you need to look into is if you want to replace this elevator, I don't know what it would cost.
So the existing one, I mean, has it ever been, you know...
It had maintenance side, but like I said, I don't know how old the thing is. I know it was there when I was working for the city.
Really?
No, I used it the other day and I was scared a dead thing was going to stop. It did get awfully hot in there.
I should always take a cellphone with you just in case.
Yeah, I do. Yeah, I did, I did.
I think about ninety four maybe, but in.
Is that old yet?
Ninety four.
Really?
I think old market is here.
Older than that.
I'd have to stay in that. It stinks in there so bad. I guess they said that with the birds.
That's nasty.
Yeah. You're riding it, you're breathing it.
Yeah.
You wrote it in?
Yeah. Good with it?
I'm as lost as Teddy is.
I mean, they're really.
Yeah, I mean. There's no way of knowing, is there?
Yeah. All right, Sheriff, I think we're done with that.
Do you have a question? Like I said, worst case, doesn't pass mid-layoff, two security officers. The way we wrote that into our contract, if there's any layoffs, they have to go first.
That's right.
Who pays those salaries?
Who pays the?
Security officer.
Security officer's salary, I know, coming down to general fund.
So if you're looking at three hundred and forty thousand dollars with the cuts, those thirty two thousand dollars would come off of that first, before we should reduce our lineups, right?
Okay, that sounds fair enough. That sounds fair enough, yeah.
Well, you're looking at one percent, right?
Yeah, the question.
Yeah.
Pretty close.
Would that also affect Patrick's helper or assistant, that does investigation?
Well, that, his salary comes off my budget, the task force officer.
Okay.
And he would be the next one to be laid off.
Okay. So when it came to the percentage for your budget, that would be the first layoff in your budget?
Ted, what'd you say the security makes up there, thirty two?
About thirty two, thirty three thousand.
So would that be ten percent of what we're wanting to save?
You're up for that, yeah. And we could do that, we're not mandated by the court assistant to have this.
It's just something everybody agreed to do, that, you know, they wanted it.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Don't.
Thank you, thank you, Sheriff.
Been out my direction lately?
Me? No, I haven't.
You guys been up there yet, since then?